Okay, I'd like to call the Planning Commission into session for Thursday, April 20th. Time is 2:33 PM. I'm Pat Cohn, Acting Chair. Present are Rick Abel and Harry Konashega, Absent are Wayne Key and Joanne Prisly. If anyone wishes to speak during this session, please stand and affirm that you'll be telling the truth. Say, "I do."
Yes, I do.
We have one case, number 0605, Mr. Michael Smeltzer, business use variance request. Steve, would you like to explain this to us first?
My name is Steve Pearson. I'm the zoning administrator for the City of Athens, Ohio, and I provided a packet of information to you that accompanied a request of my office for a use permit at 315 East State Street. I encourage my officers now to accept applications and do some preliminary review before I do the final review. And in this case, Mr. Smeltzer was speaking with Paul Eschenbacher at my office. Originally, Mr. Eschenbacher thought that Mr. Smeltzer might be able to go directly to the Board of Zoning Appeals and ask for a variance from the section of the code that permits a home occupation, where someone living in a home can use up to 50% of their floor space in their own private residence as early as an R1 zone in order to conduct business. As I reviewed it and spoke to Mr. Smeltzer and Mr. Eschenbacher, Mr. Smeltzer's proposal is just to completely convert this home in an R1 single-family zoning district to strictly commercial use, office use. And I'll let him explain more about the particular type of business he proposes to conduct there. You should have, with the information that you received, a tax plat with some lines that I drew over top of it. What it does is it indicates the proximity of the property itself to the adjacent business zone. This is on this side of Route 33, on East State Street, and it's right across May Avenue from Super America. Super America is the start of the B3 zoning district that runs all the way out onto East State Street. So this is the furthest extent back into the intersection of the city where business is allowed to be conducted. Now, just down the street and on the other side, there's a B1 neighborhood business district.
That's the one that stood, Old Shell Station?
No.
Where Premier Video is.
Starting at Premier Video, yeah, and heading back, excuse me, all the way to Athens Flower Shop. That's that B1 neighborhood zone, on the other side of the street. And in doing this review, what I noted on the refusal was, there's a code section that says, "Before you can apply for a use variance to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Commission has to review the proposal first and make a recommendation to the board." So, and hopefully, in that packet of information that you have, it's zoning code section 230712, and it just says, "Variance for business use forwarded to the Planning Commission for their review and reviewed in terms and objectives, recommendations of the comprehensive plan of the city, and then forward your recommendation back to the Board of Zoning Appeals before they can hear the case."
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Across the street from this lot that we're talking about, how is that Winton property zoned?
That's zoned R1, single-family residential.
So it's grandfathered?
It's a grandfathered legal non-conforming use. There had been some question about it in the past because they actually, they quit pumping gas there for a while. They still sold snacks, had like a little carryout for a while, and still had auto repair going on there. I had some questions from people in the neighborhood when they essentially took out the food service and just converted it, essentially turned it all into auto repair. Did that not, was that not a violation, or did it not cause their grandfathering to expire? I did talk to the law director about that, and essentially, what he told me was, it was a voluntary reduction in non-conforming use. So they had food service and auto repair going on, and they voluntarily cut, essentially cut in half their non-conforming.
But they still had the auto repair?
Right, so they were still allowed to continue with the auto repair. So it is a grandfathered legal non-conforming use straight across the street.
And it's only those three lots across the street, or how much of that block is
On that side of the block, it's just that corner property that's a grandfathered non-conforming use. You have to go clear down to the next street, where on the corner, well, it does kind of show it right there. No, I take that back. You have to go clear down to, not North Shannon, the next street down. There's a parking lot right next to Premier Video. Premier Video is in the B1 zone.
Okay.
But there, two of their lots that have parking on them, adjacent to the corner, were zoned R1. So technically speaking, that's why you don't see much parking going on on that corner. That's a legal non-conforming use, but the parking on that lot has to be for the use of Premier Video.
I see.
It lost its use as a parking lot, as a general parking lot, long ago, and that's why you don't see very many cars at all down on that corner.
But 2309 and 2310 are still R1, right?
Yes. Yes, that whole corner's R1.
And 2311?
Yes, that's all R1. That whole stretch across the top.
That whole block. I mean, yeah, okay.
All right.
Okay.
This property, I just, I'm at Super America all the time, but I don't pay too much attention to the house. I just drove down before the meeting to look. There is a, there's parking for two cars on the lot. There's a single-car garage and a driveway approach that goes up to the garage. So there's parking for two in the back.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay. Thank you. Michael, would you like to? Give us your name and your address.
Mike Smeltzer, 14-300 Coolville Ridge Road, Athens, Ohio, and currently renting office space at 92 North Court. Local business owner, would like to make a more permanent commitment to the community by buying something. I've looked high and low, primarily on Court Street and main arteries that have some energy to them, with the exception of Richland Avenue. And as far as Court Street goes, things are very expensive. Try to offset it with student rentals above, but if you do any kind of converting or any kind of renovating to those buildings, which I would like to do and make them more attractive and better, then you have to have some associated parking, and that becomes a more expensive proposition yet. So I got the idea, I kind of drove around, and I saw that there are a number of businesses, even on East State, Hayes Realty, et cetera, that have converted homes into offices, and I thought that might make a nice match. So I kept my eye on that for about six months or so. And then about six months ago, I noticed this home. It went for sale by owner. I got into a contract pending a favorable outcome from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I'm hoping to get some leniency or some granting of being able to use that space for business. It's a small financial advising consulting firm, three employees total, and I don't want to correct.
That's fine.
We just met today. What, Steve?
Pearson.
Steve Pearson, yep.
He's talking quite often.
Yep, yep. The number of parking spaces, I was able to park, when I went to look and see if I wanted to buy the property, I was able to park behind the owners who were outside of the garage. So I counted it as three spaces, but perhaps officially, it's only two. I'm not sure how that works out, but, so.
But you would have three employees?
Two employees and myself, correct.
And clients, hopefully.
And clients, hopefully. That would be the idea, yes. Yes, indeed. Yep. You know, eight-to-five type of business, high-end clientele. Want the building to stay looking nice and very professional, so in terms of aesthetics, it would be as good or better. It's actually a rather attractive property now, but I think it can be made a little more manicured, and stand a little bit better. And it's on a corner, gets some decent visibility. The case I was thinking was, you know, it's right across from a lot of bright lights at a gas station, and across the other way from an auto repair shop, which I'm sure creates some noise, though I've not been there to hear that, but I imagine during the day there's some noise there. So I thought it might make a nice match for a business instead of a residence.
Either of you, questions?
I guess one of my concerns is that, once it converts to a business use, and if your business grows and then you need to go to another location, what happens? I mean, and one of the concerns that were expressed to us, I think, at least to me at the time we were doing East State Street, was, in talking about the zoning of the B1 area up in there, was that residents didn't want the commercial to continue to, you know, come up East State Street. And that was, you know, expressed at public meetings, et cetera, and I think this is the beginning of that. I'm, you know, I'm not too compelled.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I might, that's a good point. A contrary, another point might be that a lot of those homes, especially facing East State, I don't know if you've driven back and forth there often, but there are 10 or 12 properties for sale. According to my broker, more than three of them have been up there for a year, and he cites the reason that people just don't want to live where there's so much traffic facing that street. And I would agree that protecting the area's neighborhoods intact is a tremendous priority, but I would argue that on that, on that main artery facing East State that gets so much traffic, that possibly, that might make a nice spot for a commercial business, and it wouldn't be a student rental. It would keep things quiet at nighttime, and that may benefit the community, especially with this kind of business. And as for expansion, in the event that that occurred, I would expect to have to appear before a board and get their blessing, and if not, begin to look for some other properties that might accommodate that. That's what I was thinking. I didn't, I don't know how all that works, but that was my assumption.
Harry?
Well, I'm trying to make up a mind. East State Street being busy, you know, is, depends on your viewpoint, but it used to be worse, when it was a highway. I lived on East State Street for a while, and could hear the semis coming to stop at Morris.
Doing the braking?
Right.
Yep.
I don't think you have that anymore. I don't know, I think you've got to convince me a little more.
Okay.
It'll change.
What points would you like me to amplify?
Well, I think we're going against the grain by, you know, rezoning that, which is what we're doing if we give a variance.
I agree. Gosh, I think I've hit the biggies, that there seems to be a number of homes there on that artery that are for sale, and for whatever reason, they don't seem to be selling. And again, a few brokers that I've spoken with have said, you know, these are hard places to sell because people don't want to live, it's hard to get in and out. This particular property is on a corner, so it makes, you know, there is a way to get in and out, and it also has the luxury of being at a traffic light, which makes things a little easier. And again, I think, you know, being at a traffic light, I'm not sure if that's a, it seems like a more business thing to me than, you know, when I come to an intersection of a traffic light, it's generally not in the middle of a residential area, it's usually in some kind of commercial zone. So there's, you know, the exhaust and so forth is spewing out, and that, you know, for folks that are there 24 hours or 18 hours out of the day, might be disadvantageous to them versus a business, which is just eight hours a day, and then we're gone. Things are quiet, well-maintained. I've hit all my high points. Konashega, I'm not sure.
Houses now that are selling is really not persuasive, because other houses have been sold elsewhere over a year in my neighborhood.
I'm relying on my broker's wisdom on that one, not on my own.
And I know Bill Byers sold his home on East State Street, I think, rather quickly.
Yeah.
And he's out there, and one of my neighbors now.
Okay.
I have a question about the entry. The driveway enters from East State Street?
No, ma'am, enters from May.
Oh, from May, okay. And then where is the garage?
Straight, as you turn right off of May into the driveway, it is directly behind, so you would drive straight into the garage from that point.
I see, okay. And then suppose that you had a client coming, where would the client park?
I've looked at that, and I would probably either park there, depends on what, you know, whatever one says is a good thing to do. I would prefer to allow the client to park there, and I would park on the street in front of the gas station. That would be my preference, unless the zoning board feels differently.
Well, you can't really park in front of the gas station, because they've got entries from May and entries from State Street, so.
Well, they've got a, really, they've got three-car lengths of curb almost directly across the street that is not painted yellow, so I would presume that that is eligible for parking. I couldn't be misinterpreting that, but I parked there just to, you know, just to see what it would be like.
And nobody hit your car?
Nobody hit my car, and no one towed me away. You got it? Yep, yep. And I guess I do have one other point that I've kind of touched on, but I haven't come out and said it clearly, Mr. Konashega, and that is, the idea of a buffer zone, what I'm kind of getting at there is, this home sits between one of the very nice neighborhoods in Athens and a gas station, service station, you know, people buying cigarettes, this kind of activity is going on all the time. This home would create, I think, a very nice buffer for those folks that would not want to see all of that transaction, and all of that light, and all of that noise, et cetera, and maybe keep things quieter and dimmer by having my place function as, again, an eight-to-five office, and then, you know, and keep it looking as an attractive home. I don't wish to do any modifications, other than any required for a bathroom for a disability, et cetera. So that might be a point I hadn't said before in a clear fashion.
Might be kind of hard to make it accessible for clients with disabilities.
Back porch is very conducive, the back areas of, you know, I checked out and did some measuring, and we can, we could pull off a ramp there if we needed to.
Uh-huh.
Yep, and it wouldn't be too obtrusive, it would lead right out to the garage there.
I guess.
In other words, it would keep the face, you know, as most of the traffic is on East State, it would keep that appearance very clean.
Right, that was what I was wondering, whether you could do, yeah.
Yep.
Well, one of my concerns is, we've talked often for a long time about the number of owner-occupied houses and family-occupied houses in Athens, and the fact that that's been going down steadily. And this is one that, at this point, is able to be occupied by a family, and if it were a student rental, it would be constrained by that, no more than three unrelated people.
Correct. And there's just two bedrooms in that particular home.
Yeah, so that would, but it does mean that it's perhaps a lower-cost housing that might be available for a family. I realize they haven't snapped it up.
Right, right, right. Very true.
And it is, on the one hand, a buffer from Super America, on the other hand, it's the first lot in that block to go.
Which is a.
And which I think is something that we really need to be concerned about if we want to keep some R1 on East State Street.
Certainly understand that. I'll yield to the Planning Commission's wisdom on that. I was, just an idea.
Any more questions? Questions for?
No, not a whole lot. I mean, I think a lot of, I mean, like the Hayes Real Estate and everything, I mean, that existed a long time ago, and it got grandfathered in that situation. I was thinking, some of that parking lot by Premier Video, the reason that's R1, they used to have houses on it, and then those were torn down, and the lot kind of expanded. Or Conrad Realty used to be Hawk Dodge, wasn't it? Plymouth Dodge, et cetera.
Well, and the house next to it was offices for a long time. The Boy Scouts were in there, and so.
But that's in the B zone.
Yeah, but this had been, this has been R1 since we had zoning, and it's.
Well, I'm familiar with there. I grew up along Tillingham right down there, moved there in '54. So I'm, you know, I remember a lot of, this used to be my paper route. So, familiar with it, and it is, there's some mixed stuff in there, but I mean, I would not be adverse to really looking at this more as a zoning-type change. But with this type of thing, there's no notification of the adjacent property owners, et cetera. The zoning board would be where that would occur, as I recall, and, you know.
Can I?
Sure.
If this is considered by the Board of Zoning Appeals, it's a consideration for a variance, not for rezoning. So it's a use variance. Variances are allowed to have safeguards and conditions attached to them. For example, no more than three employees, review by the Board of Zoning Appeals, or the Planning Commission after one year of operation. There are some things the zoning board can attach. So it won't go forever to a business use unless it is rezoned, and rezoning is a whole different, whole different ballgame. Now, as far as notification to adjoining property owners, that takes place at the advertisement for the zoning board. So all the people that live right across the street or just adjacent to it are notified, and then there's a legal notice is published in the Athens Messenger prior to that. And then, my agenda list is now emailed to all neighborhood associations, so Nina will pick up on it right away and know that there's a request at the Board of Zoning Appeals for a use variance and not a rezoning. So it's not something that if, you know, if the zoning board says, "Okay," it's not something that goes on forever necessarily. They can attach any kind of condition that is reasonable, as you can think of. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other, but if you would decide for a favorable recommendation, you could attach some things like that, you know, that we recommend that it be reviewed by the board or by the commission after one year, or that no more than three employees be allowed to be there at any one time, that no exterior signage be allowed. I mean, there's a whole multiple of different conditions and safeguards that could be attached. I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other, but it's not like it's something that then is done forever, can never go back.
No exterior signage would make it kind of a scavenger hunt to find.
I was going to comment about that. That is one thing I did check on the application, was I would like to have a sign akin to Alex Collados, something classy and fairly small, just in the front door. I don't think affixed to the building, but again, at the commission's leisure.
That would take a variance to have a sign of any substantial size in an R1 zone. That'd be, that would be a variance. But again, variances can have safeguards and conditions attached to them. Like the, if it's a lighted sign, the light has to go out at, you know, when the business isn't in operation. So it's not advertising, it's something that's there to let people know during business hours, and it's not an additional light pollution kind of a thing. Although, it'd be a little tough right there next to the gas station to get it any brighter all night long.
Well, what's your pleasure in doing your motion?
I would think that, I guess first off, that I wouldn't know what conditions to even start to consider off the top of my head without really looking at it, but I'm really disturbed about a potential change in use in an R1 when those people that own the properties around there aren't aware of it. Because we've had other requests over the years for across the street from the B3 to go into an architect's office at one point in time, as I recall. And we've been consistent in not doing that, thinking there's adequate be area on East State Street. Because I know that, I'm not sure what it is now, but that house you were referring to, where the Boy Scouts were, was also under D. Jones' office for fairly recently, in the last two or three years. I just, you know, I would not be adverse to continuing it from the standpoint of trying to get some input from the neighborhood and such. I wouldn't mind hearing from some realtors if there really is a sale problem in that area. So I would be adverse to continuing it, but I wouldn't be in favor of granting anything today. I guess that's what table it for, would be the only motion you'd get out of me.
Well, table it pending what testimony by?
Well, I would like at least to notify the neighbors on both sides of the, in the area. And, you know, anything that Mr. Smeltzer wants to bring is, you know, he's brought up the thought that it's difficult, more difficult to sell as residential in that area because of next, adjacent to the Super America, or Sa, what is it called? Is this in Super America anymore?
No, it's Speedway.
Speedway.
That's a bad.
Yeah. And I was a little concerned about the parking issue there, because only one side of May allows parking, and I don't know how much residents use that. I don't know enough, I have to go through and look at the area again to see, are people using that at all for their on-street parking, because they don't have driveways, or.
Well, there's a fair amount of traffic.
Or the employees of Speedway park. I don't know.
Well, there's a fair amount of traffic on May Avenue, because I come up it often, and if there is a car parked, then we're doing a dance around who goes first. So it really, May Avenue really only has three lanes as far as being, as far as width, so that if somebody is parked, then you have to be careful about who goes first. So now, if we send it to the Planning, to the Board of Zoning Appeals, then they will do all this, right?
Well, they will do all of those.
If we do it, if we require it first, then it's going to happen twice, which is I'm just going, want to get clear what it is you'd like to have happen.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm willing to let it continue for another meeting, because I don't want to drag it out for a long period of time. Otherwise, I would just move to not grant the, it's a negative motion, you're supposed to make those all the time.
Well, suppose that you say, if you want to table it until we get more information, then let's specify what more information, so that we don't leave Mike out in the.
My inclination is, Steve, if we reject, if we not recommend the variance, what then happens? It just goes to the zoning board with a recommendation like that from us?
Well, Mr. Smeltzer then would have the opportunity to go to the board or not. It might be a little challenging without a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission to convince the zoning board that the use variance should be granted. That would be his decision after this meeting, if he wanted to proceed and actually go to that, you know, to that forum.
Right, but it's my understanding, if we do that today, he does not have the opportunity to come back to us with the same.
Right.
Thing, right? And that's why I was offering the continuance, for everybody to think about it a little bit more, and maybe get more information about it. But I think time-specific, I want to get some neighborhood input, definitely. I think that's the most important to me, is the other property owners in that area and within, you know, even down, you know, not very far from Elmwood and a lot of other areas. But I know that in that area, because if you just go down May to Elmwood and go in right, Pine Walden's there, probably been there 50, 60 years. There are the type of thing interspersed, because it's an old neighborhood, it's been there for a long, long time. It was probably mostly built in the 20s and 30s, would be my guess. So I'm willing to continue it, otherwise I'll, you know, forbid, to get neighborhood input, period. That's the only one I would require.
Okay.
I can do some additional notification way outside the scope of anything that's required for other reviews. Instead of just notifying adjacent property owners, I could write a specific letter to all property owners within 500 feet. I could put a legal ad in the newspaper that says, "On such-and-such day, the Planning Commission is going to consider this review." I can make sure that all the information gets to Near East Side Neighborhood Association. So there's some, there's a lot of advertising or publicity that I could do, and I think that's what the mayor's most concerned about, is is this something, I mean, it's one thing to look at the comprehensive plan and hear what everybody says, but then when it really comes down to a specific site. comes down to a specific site.
Right.
You know, is, is this general idea really what we want here? And the answer may be yes. So without that input from the neighborhood, you just, you just don't know. So I could do that. For example, you could table it condition upon my notification, a notification in the newspaper of a meeting of the Planning Commission to consider it, and I could specifically send a letter to each property owner within whatever distance you'd like for me to do that, and notify the Neighborhood Association. Those three things.
Okay. Would you like to second that motion?
I'll make the motion according to, according to Steve's suggestion.
Okay, then, will you second it?
I'll second it.
All right, now we can have discussion.
Well, I think that the main element here is that even though, as Steve rightly points out, we could put conditions on this particular utilization that would lessen the impact in an R1, but still, at some point down the road, it gets sold again, you know? And then you've got a building that's been partially converted to a non-residential use. And that is hard to sell because you have a very limited market. So in some ways, I mean, I'm more used to something that would be a business that isn't listed like it's more appropriate. It's had R1 or a B1 or a B2 and we've got a B3 usage type of thing, but it's already primarily a business usage.
Suppose that down the line, you sell it for a residential purpose and it's converted back into a residence, then what has, has to happen?
Well, then the, the variance would lapse.
Yeah, but, but he doesn't, he wouldn't have to go back to the planning, the Board of Zoning Appeals or anything.
I don't believe so. If you go back to base zoning, you don't have to, to do, not use the variance.
There have been particular cases that the zoning board has attached a condition, for example, that the variance only goes with the current applicant or current appellant. They can't sell the business or sell it as a business use. This is exclusively for their use and expires when they no longer use the property in that manner. And so the zoning board's done that.
Then it would revert to residential.
Right, it would just go back to, as the mayor said, it'd just go back to any principally permitted use in the base zone.
Okay. All right, are you ready to vote?
If I might just quickly expand.
Sure.
Just to comment on the mayor's comment, the reconversion back, of course, the onus would be on me to not lose money, that I know, you know, if I did some things, it would make it more appropriate for a business. And then I wanted to sell it back as a residence and not go through more hearings and so forth. And the onus, of course, would be right here to make sure that I'm doing that in an efficient manner and not losing money in the process, so just kind of a side note.
Okay, you ready to vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, it's three, three to none. Okay. We have a letter from the Athens Near North Side Neighborhood Association talking about the, is this talking about the landmark?
Yes. What do they call it?
The landmark project. Yeah, inside of the former Bob's IGA. And they're talking about, they want us to be aware of comparative density per acre of various projects and the parking problems and the height of the parking garage, the loss of retail space, and other considerations. And that's the only communication we have. We have two public hearings coming up on Thursday, the 27th, at 2:30 PM. The first one is the M1 zone, or the M-zone for the landmark project, a change in that zone. The second is the zoning designations for University Estates prior to their annexation. And that's 2:30, Thursday, April 27th.
Next week.
Here. Opportunity for citizens to speak on items not covered on the agenda.
What happened to the girl?
She, is the post reporter, and she took what she needed. Okay. We have the March 16th minutes, which we got in the mail. I gave a couple of minor corrections to Melissa, does anybody else? Have you had a chance to read them? These are the same ones that came in the mail.
I guess I'll just go with whatever you have.
Okay, those, what I had was one correction in the University Estates thing, just it was a word that was left out. Halfway down the sentence, it begins "take of" as most of the open space, and it should, after "take," it should say "take care of." And then Ann Isaac's name was misspelled on the next page, she's one S and two As. I think those are the only.
Oh, very good.
Changes that I gave.
Good job.
And, do we need, let's see, okay, did anybody move to approve the March 16th minutes?
I saw move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those are fine. Do we need to do anything about this ordinance from Muriel Grimm about the land development, I mean, letter about the land development ordinance and all of this stuff, or do I need to take it home to read it, or? It's from you.
Oh, I don't know that the whole thing. No, it's just this part. These are, oh, I think at the last meeting, I said that I would get you all de-isms and purchase agreements for, of the landmark property to access.
Oh, right.
Right.
The parking area on the Hocken Valley Bank homes, that's what that is.
Okay.
Let's see, this one is a copy that I said that I'd get to you about a review by Engineering Associates about utilities at the site. Let's see, this one is, this is the documentation that's required for a rezoning, which you mentioned would take place, considered at the next meeting, next Thursday.
Oh, for the, the University Estates?
Rezoning or zoning?
No, this is.
Rezoning of, from end of R3.
This is the landmark.
The edge group, that's landmark.
Yeah, rezoning.
Oh, okay, the rezoning, yes, okay, right, yes.
Okay. And then that document that you have right there on the top is, it's a copy of the land development ordinance. It's a copy of a letter I received from Muriel Grimm, representing the Athens Environmental Committee. It's a copy of a new addition to the land development ordinance, which requires that a developer not generally change the size, shape, and topography of a property. And then there's my response letter to Ms. Grimm. So I just wanted you to know that, you know, I had been contacted by, by the group who evidently made the recommendation to council to amend that section of the land development ordinance.
I thought that amendment to the land development was in the statement of purpose. I hadn't looked at it for a while, so. Yeah, under the statement of purpose, this is what they added.
Right. It's not listed under the specific requirements or regulations or guidelines, it's just listed in the purpose.
Yeah.
And that's why if you read those letters, I've expressed the fact that it's very, going to be very problematic for myself or the Service Safety Director to determine when someone is generally changing the site and when they're not generally changing the site. I know some cases, it will be very obvious that they're generally changing it, but something so general just creates, I mean, it's interpretive then, you have to.
Right.
You have to make some kind of a judgment call, and that's always kind of where the pinch comes in.
Well, my opinion of it had been that it was an imperfect, very dysfunctional ordinance change. Unfortunately, I was out of town the night council passed it, so therefore I had to have it. Bill Bias was acting mayor, the law director ruled I couldn't veto it, which is what I wanted to do to it, because it really needs straightened out to be able to really be effective. And then what happened is, Bill never signed it, but he didn't veto it. He just left it unsigned. So, I mean, this is what's happening, is that by that, people are making different interpretations of it, looking at it in different ways. You really need to spell things out when you start talking about land development or any ordinance. It really needs to be more than in a statement of purpose that has no other, as you go down through the land development ordinance, I mean, it's not included in the definitions, it's not in, how do you get, you know, the administration, how do you, I mean, it's just left hanging, is almost like a dangling pot.
I don't see how you could, know how you could enforce it or, you know, what, what ground you'd have to stand on if you said you're changing the general size of the natural topography or the general.
Right.
Taken in one sense, you can take where someone has a home on the Near East Side that burns, it's destroyed, in other words, well, to raise it above the 100-year flood elevation, which was what you have to do under other sections of our code, you'd be changing the topography that lot. What are you going to do? Just abandon that lot then? Because.
Yeah, I.
That's changing the topography?
Well, do we need to send, do, do, we need to send something back to the, to council from the Planning Commission in terms of a proposed amendment to the land development ordinance, or do we need to send a question back to them about?
Well, the real question is how does this relate back to our recommendations on PUDs, subdivisions that we, we might approve, and there's lots in there that, I mean, it's like looking at Oakmont Phase 3, there were lots that we saw even there that were, they've definitely challenged to build a house, and what they had is, through is brand fill. And do their various things in order to build on those lots, so is this something, because normally the land development ordinance doesn't really impact us very much, but I can see now with that kind of interpretation in theirs.
Yeah.
Are we leading a developer down a path that then will conflict with something else that we don't have anything to say about down the road? And I find that problematic.
As the mayor mentioned, you'll see proposals when it has to do with a subdivision, because a section of land development ordinance speaks to sites five acres or greater in area or subdivisions. I have a couple homes, excuse me, being built right now on Carroll Road. It was an area annexed not too long ago, maybe five, six years ago. It's on the left-hand side as you're going into Oakmont, and those lots sloped off drastically. As a matter of fact, when the Planning Commission reviewed the annexation request, they had recommended the Board of Zoning Appeals that anyone who needed a setback variance be allowed to do that, just because of the challenged topography there. Now, some builders have chosen just to bring in truckload after truckload of fill in order not to have to ask for a variance and fill the lot up, so they can actually have a structure there that doesn't have a high wall on the basement on the back that's 40 feet tall. I don't know. And see, that would be a case where, as a zoning administrator, I would have to apply that to even the construction of a single-family home, and I, boy, I'm not sure. I don't, I would say in that case, I mean, if you had to ask me, I'd probably say, yeah, they're generally changing it because it was a ravine and now they're making it flat. So when you have, as the mayor mentioned, when you have areas that, if the town is about 70% either hillside or floodplain, and you're required to elevate in the flood hazard area, and you're required to create building and slope stability on a hillside, you could interpret that to mean you've just nullified any kind of development in 70% of the town.
Well, elsewhere in the hillside, or ordinances and such, and also the corresponding section of the code that does with runoff of water.
Right.
I mean, there's some exemptions in there in respect to the size of a lot, so that it doesn't impact single-family homes, basically.
Right.
There's no exemption in that, that I see.
I, just so you know too, I had one developer ask me the other day, he says, you know what? I have to generally change the topography of the lot just to drain the water on occasion. I mean, one of my first considerations before I even get water and sewer there, I have to make sure that I can get rid of the stormwater, I can actually build there for it. So it's just, and I just copied you on it because it will apply in large PUDs and subdivisions. So I just wanted you to have a heads up about it.
I think we need to have a list of these kind of naughty questions and have a session when we just talk about those and send our concerns to council and in form, in the form of, we see the need for legislation that addresses this problem and.
As soon as we find the time, right?
Right. Well, no, but I think we ought to be keeping a.
Yes.
A file of things like this that are going to cause problems, and that certainly is going to cause Steve a problem.
Yeah.
Can I mention another one? Do we have a problem?
Sure, you're on a roll.
All right, you do it real quick.
Michelle Melissa, yes.
It, it is the political time of the year, and the Athens sign ordinance related to political advertising is akin to one from Painesville, Ohio, that was found to be unconstitutional. And so my ability to enforce that essentially no longer exists. And what I would like to do, if it's all right with you, is to give you an ordinance that's already been challenged, might even just get the one from Painesville, Ohio, because I'm sure it's past legal muster, and so we can have something to regulate political signage.
But I thought you said Painesville's ordinance had been found unconstitutional.
Right, they've rewritten it since then.
Oh, okay.
Because now, there really isn't anything, I dare say this or not, you could go out and put up a billboard now. You could have signs of any size that you wanted in your yard. Now, everybody's being real good about it, honestly. I mean, we don't have large signs, and I have my normal ones that are out on the right of way, kind of the orphan signs that I'm still pulling up. But I have no ability to require the bonding that's required from a political candidate, nor to limit the size. So I could put that on my list of things to do too, if you'd like. I mean, it's way too late now to do it, but I think it's something that we do, we need to do.
Right.
So I'll, I'll volunteer to do that.
Yeah, you can, you can make a draft list for us, things that you, you find.
Yeah, well, you're probably going to run into more of these first than we will.
That may be a good jumping off point for us, Steve. I mean, just that overall list, because are there things in the PUD, like now that it's in the subdivision regulations rather than the zoning code?
Though, I don't know if I've copied you on those questions that I've asked of the law director. I'll go back through some of those things and see if I did or didn't copy you. I have quite a few outstanding issues with the law director at the moment, and I can keep this list for the city planner when they get here.
Sure.
Because those are the kinds of things that, I don't mind to do it, and it's not that hard to do really, but a city planner would be professionally trained in those kinds of things, to recommend.
Yeah.
Recommend ordinances, zoning changes, and to maybe be a little more forward-looking, and I, I don't have the time to be able to do that. I just have to react to fires, essentially.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion. Oh, we have to probably decide when we're going to meet next.
Lower me.
Whatever the, was it the 27th, but then there's the first, first Thursday in May at?
May 4th.
May 4th, okay. At 2:30.
Yeah, because I think we probably should act on.
The business use variant.
Well, once we have a public hearing, we should start.
Right.
Do the rest of the actions that are necessary.
But you can't do it then because it's not a regular meeting.
Right, but we could do it on May 4th.
We could do it on May 4th.
I can get that ad, I can notify the property owners and put an ad in the paper.
It won't be in there, well, I couldn't get it in for next Thursday, so.
But you could get it in for the 4th.
So you could, I could call it for the 4th.
Right, but we have the, all the. Right, well, we have the, all the proper advertising out for those public hearings, that's why it was the 27th. We probably ought to follow up and then do, if that's, we're going to talk about it obviously on May 4th. Whether we do a final motion or not, I don't know.
No, we're talking, but he's talking about Michael Smeltzer, right?
Right, I'm talking about Mr. Smeltzer.
Right, you do that one, sure.
Do that one on the 4th. And it'll give plenty of time, I mean, that way people will have a 10-day notice, probably anyway.
Should hang on forever.
If I can, it won't be exactly a 10-day notice, but there's no requirement.
Well, there's no...
It'll be at least a seven-day notice.
And whatever we do, we're probably going to send it on to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but just with a recommendation or yes or no, right?
Right.
So that will give them another chance to be heard.
They don't meet again before the 4th anyway.
No, but I mean, that will give the...
They meet the second Tuesday of all months, right?
Right. Yeah, so they'll meet on the 9th.
So that will give the...
If you, if you'll make a recommendation on the 4th, I'll hold a spot open for Mr. Smeltzer on the 9th.
That makes sense.
That's good, yeah.
We haven't delayed anybody, but we've gotten some more, at least opportunity for input.
Right.
Good.
If that wouldn't be the case, I'd rather have somebody else have the chance to appeal because I'm kind of backlogged at the zoning board right now. But Mr. Smeltzer's been waiting quite a while, too.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
That's it.